Please take a moment to celebrate and honor this ancestral Hochunk land and the sacred lands of all indigenous peoples. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Ebermann?
Here.
Ms. Bowman?
Excused.
Ms. Burkertal?
Here.
Dr. Cooperstol?
Yes.
Dr. Garcia?
Here.
Dr. Jimenez?
Here.
Ms. Leahy?
Here.
Mr. Korberg?
Here.
Mr. Spivey?
Here.
The board of education is present, so the regularly scheduled meeting of June 6, 2022 is called to order. We will now have the pledge of allegiance. Please stand and face the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there a second?
Second.
Tonight's agenda has previously been distributed to the board with a motion by Mr. Korberg and a second by Ms. Leahy. We will approve the agenda as submitted unless there is a motion to amend. Is there a motion to amend? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion has carried. We'll move on to the long-range facility plan survey presentation. Dr. Engel?
Thank you, Dr. Jimenez. We moved this one up in front of public comment. One of our presenters had to be out by seven o'clock, so thank you for your flexibility. With us today, we have Bill Foster from School Perceptions, and then also joining us online are our partners at Bray, Clint Selly and Matt Wolfert. We thank them for being here as well. But we're pretty much going to turn it over to Bill Foster to go through the results of the survey that we just put out to our community regarding the idea of one high school. Bill, if you're there...
I am. Can you hear me? All right? And I'm not sure my camera is...
Sound is very low in our room.
Okay.
We're going to work on that.
All right. Let's see if you can see my screen and see if we can get this to work.
Aaron, just as a test, I'll speak quickly just in case, just so we know it's on Bill's end or if it's an audio end on your side.
Sound is good here now, and we are able to see the presentation.
All right. Can you hear me now?
Yes, you're good, Bill.
All right. Thank you. Again, I'm Bill Foster with you tonight to share the results of your community survey. And this report that we're going to be sharing is organized around really three primary areas. Everything that was in the survey itself is in the report, so when you scratch your heads a month from now and say, "What did that survey actually say?", you can reference the report. We're going to look at the demographic information as well as analyze the results, and we'll wrap up with questions and answers when we're done. So the survey was mailed out to all households in the school district of La Crosse. People had the opportunity to either fill out a paper version or take the survey online. As of writing the report, we had 5,859 total responses. Twenty-nine, over 2,900 of those came back via paper. It gave us a participation rate of 20.4% or a statistical margin of error plus or minus 1.3%. So it is by far the highest response rate we have had with the La Crosse School District and all the surveys we've done for you. So that's great. We had a couple of demographic questions. First was, what is your age? When I look at this, I always look at our seniors, which at 65 and older are well represented, which they actually are. They're actually overrepresented as compared to the 2020 census. But when it comes to voting, seniors tend to turn out and vote at a much higher level than our younger 18- to 24-year-olds. So it's a bit biased older, but that is good. In which municipality do you live? We had representation from all the cities and townships. Seventy percent of our sample live in the city of La Crosse. Then it goes down to the town in Shelby, town of Campbell. And we actually had representations from a couple of people in the town of Washington and town of Hamburg. I understand there's only a couple of homes there, but we had representation across the board, which is great. Next question is, your primary residence in the school district of La Crosse? We had 96% of our sample that said yes to that with, or 95 with 4% saying no and 1% saying that they weren't sure, which raises a question. Were these people taking our survey that don't live in our district? It's really primarily two groups. One is all staff who are invited to participate, as well as parents who are choosing to open a role into the district. Over those, non-residents will not be able to vote. Therefore, they are not included in the funding support question. We had 11% of our sample were employees of the district and 28% of our sample were parents in the district. And of the parents, this is actually not a percent. These are the actual numbers that responded, that they had parent, or that they had children in each of these schools. However, it is possible to have a child at the elementary, middle and high school. So some people might have been counted more than once, but this kind of gives you a breakdown of where the parents responded from each of their schools. Again, the background information that was in the survey is in the report. We started out talking about and explaining your tax mill rate information, which has declined since the 2013-14 school year. It's leveled off at a 9.98 right now. We talked about downsizing or rightsizing to, as a plan, first primarily focusing at the middle and high school level. In order to do that, we're proposing building one high school, and we showed where that proposed site was in the map. We talked a little bit about the high school design. It's not detailed yet, but in terms of how that new building would be configured and the sorts of areas that would be provided. And then the domino effect is if we were to build one new high school, we would be able to consolidate the existing high schools and convert them into middle schools and close the other middle schools. If we were to do that plan, it is estimated to cost $194.7 million, and it would raise or impact the tax mill rate, and it would increase it by $8 for every $100,000 of property value, or at a mill rate level, that would be 8 cents per $1,000. We then asked the question, would you support $194.7 million referendum? We broke it into three mutually exclusive subgroups. We do that because right now, our data set is overweighted towards staff, overweighted towards parents. So again, to remove any bias, we're looking at each group separately, the first being staff. The staff is at 41, I'm sorry, 51% yes, with a combined probably no and definitely no at 33% no. That's important, just because the staff is talking to friends and neighbors every day as well as parents, but they probably represent less than 1% of our voters. Then we go to the parents. The parents are at 56% supporting and 33% saying no. And the most important group, we affectionately call these people the purple people, they are the majority of your community. They neither work in the district nor have the kids in the district, so they represent the majority of your voters, approximately 75% of your voters, and they're at 46% yes with 38% no. So they're leaning towards yes, but you're not over that 50% mark. So we did some additional analysis for you. And what we did here was we just assumed and actually took out that the staff is really less than 1%. So we're not going to count their votes or their information in this analysis. Now, obviously, when, if you were to decide to go to referendum, the staff would have a voice, would have a vote, but for the sake of this, we're removing it. We're assuming that the parents represent 25% of your community, and your non-parent, non-staff is about 75%. So if you were to take a simple weighted average of those responding definitely yes or probably yes, we've got the non-parent, non-staff at 46%. We pick up, we go up to 56% for our parents. So of those just saying definitely yes or probably yes, we're at 48.5. Our experience is that, and let me just jump back one slide, for instance, of that 16% that are undecided, about a third will break yes and 2/3 will break no at a normal year. So if that were to happen in La Crosse, and you were to pick up a third of the undecided of the parent voters as well as the non-parent, non-staff voters, that would raise you up to 53.25%. So you are right on the bubble in terms of having support for this proposed project. And we did have one overall satisfaction question. This is kind of broken out on a scale of 0 to 10, from extremely unlikely to extremely likely. How likely are you to recommend the district to a friend or family member? And you can see your breakdown was at a 6.72. So that is my short presentation, because it was a pretty short survey, but let me jump back and respond to questions.
So questions from the board?
Bill, one question that I had was, is that a typical response rate for a survey like this?
You are, I would say it's a high response rate for a survey like this, especially this year. So this year, we've seen a drop-off during the pandemic. We actually saw response rates go up. I guess that was the one good thing that came out of the pandemic, was that people were so bored that they took the survey. We've seen it drop this spring a bit, but for your survey, it's a very, very high response rate and higher than even really a typical survey for a smaller district. So you're doing quite well from a response rate standpoint. People are, have strong feelings about this issue and took the survey.
Any questions from the board members?
You did such a good job, Bill. Everybody has digested the data. It's really the follow-on questions now about strategy and what comes next.
Sure.
We're going to take this as a public speaker.
Yeah. Yeah, I would agree. I mean, the questions that I have are really not about the survey, it's next steps, so... Mr. Ebermann?
Yeah, always on, yeah.
Have you done similar studies like this with other school districts in Wisconsin? And when you saw the definitely yes or probably yes, was it similar to what you saw in our survey?
No, it's all over the board. So sometimes you've got, you might have a project that has 25% support, 50% support or 75%. So it's really project-specific. You just ended up right on the bubble. The one, the one thing that you, that is kind of noticeable is there are about 33% or a third of the staff who are not supportive, about a third of your parents, and a little bit larger percent of your non-parent, non-staff. That's a little more atypical, but no, it's, there's not a, there's not a typical survey out there these days. It's quite unique to the project that's being proposed.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Thank you very much for the presentation.
All right. Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you, Clint and Matt, for joining us as well. You're more than welcome to join us for the rest of the meeting, but I suspect you have other business to attend to, so thank you for being here.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, we'll move on to the agenda. Public speakers is next. It is the policy of the board to provide at its public meetings an opportunity for individuals to address the board. Comments about individual staff or personnel will not be allowed. Open meeting law prohibits the board from engaging in discussion or responding to matters not included on the agenda. All speakers are reminded that this same policy limits your time to speak to five minutes. This limit will be strictly enforced. May I ask the superintendent to please keep track of the time and to notify the speaker when time is running out?
I will do so. I've got a yellow sign. When 30 seconds come up, I will show that and make a brief comment.
Thank you. You're also asked to give your name and the school district where you reside at the beginning of your time for the public record. Our first speaker is Adam Menka.
All right. Thanks for having me again today. Today, I don't really have too much to say about the SRO program. Let's just have a simple request I'd like to make, especially after happened at Uvalde. Today, I am requesting to be part of the community review of the SRO solution, especially since the proposal has been, what's the word say? It's been slowed down or delayed for another year. I am requesting this as a student of La Crosse Central and as someone who has seen most of what's been going on at school. Today, I mostly just want to touch upon that. I think this is important, especially after we looked at what happened at Uvalde and especially what happens with the school climate. I do not think safety has improved over in our schools, but I do think we have a lot of potential to increase on the upcoming years, and I think we see this mostly a lot in the next upcoming school board. And for the last part, thank you again for the school year. Thank you. I am out. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, babe. Our next speaker is Lisa Colburn.
Hi, I'm Lisa Colburn, La Crosse School District. I'm a business and technology teacher at La Crosse Central High School, and I appreciate giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. You have a very big responsibility in your position to make our district its very best, and there are a lot of items... and there are a lot of items to balance and decisions to make. Tonight, I would like to speak about employee benefits and retention. I am very proud and honored to be a teacher in this district. It has been home to me and my family for a very, very long time. Like many, I teach, advise, produce the yearbook, work at concessions, attend sporting events, build relationships, pour time and talent into Central High School. Lately, I've been concerned about the future of our district. Once, I boasted about how our district respected staff, compensated them far better than my colleagues in other districts, and now I am the one hearing about raises and benefits for teachers that top ours in other districts. In the past few years, I have watched coworkers move to other districts because we could no longer entice them to stay. It does not necessarily all boil down to salary either. Multiple personal days, insurance, compensation when we attend conferences, professional development, or conferences with our students are a few benefits that are appealing to staff. And I am worried about the future of our district as the dynamics of the district and the job change. Will we be a district that can attract employees? And if they start here, can we entice them to stay? I am concerned about the teacher shortage. What is enticing to someone to join our profession? In the past few years, I've been asked to have a student teacher at least twice, and that has never come to fruition because they've always been asked to teach as a student teacher with a teaching contract, and we are struggling to find certified teachers to fill our open positions. You have heard how we've faced the challenges recently in our profession. You know that we do what we do not because of the salary, because we love what we do and we want to help our children. But how long must we continue to do more for less and have that be enough to remain in our jobs? We have families we need to support. Can you value us enough to provide a competitive wage or at least provide a wage that keeps up with inflation? I am losing hope that we are not going to be able to do that because we are continuing to take an inflationary wage cut. I want to value us as our profession. Some have and are looking elsewhere for jobs and not necessarily teaching jobs. We are reaching a crisis point. We cannot continue to do more for less and survive. As we all know, teachers spend a lot of their own money in their classroom. I've spent money purchasing things for my students. It costs me money to travel with my students when they qualify for national and state competition. I've been very fortunate to be able to go to cities like San Antonio, Texas, Baltimore, Maryland, Orlando, Florida with my students because of these competitive events. However, it has cost me money every time that I do that out of my own pocket. Our meal reimbursement is $9 for lunch and $17 for dinner, and this in no way is enough to cover meals in those cities. It also offers an opportunity for us to have publicity in our schools when we take our students to these places, and I think that's important as well. But professionals in other fields do not necessarily have to pay their own money when they travel and have to pay for their own meals when they attend conferences. We are in the education business. Teachers cannot even afford to help our own children with college tuitions as they skyrocket. We value education, so our children continue post-secondary education at a cost that will likely leave them worse off than their parents and loaded with college debt. I can't help my own children because I am still in college debt, as this is the only way that I am able to secure a raise for my family. Recently, I finished my master's degree and I'm still paying on that debt. We are being asked to finance our own pay increases. Some businesses pay for education for their employees. I also teach personal finance classes. I teach my children to analyze job offers. I try to use my own experience as situations, and I've, I ask them to consider insurance coverage, personal days, vacation. How can I ask my students to be critical thinkers and make choices of value themselves if I don't ask the same for me or from my employer? So I ask you, consider how you can show value to your employees. Help us support our families. Show us reward for our hard work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brian Morris.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. First off, congratulations to returning President Jimenez and welcome to new members Garcia and Burkadell. It was very, it was a very gratifying experience to participate in Littrop's as a part of our union's endorsement of your candidacies. Seeing you victorious made me hungry for more. So here I am. My name is Brian Morris, and I reside in La Crosse, and I am a special education teacher at Central High School. My oldest child attends Sota One, and I also have a three-year-old nearing pre-K in the district. Additionally, my parents and many of my, many generations of my family before me attended La Crosse schools as well. I would like to start by thanking every teacher assistant in the district and especially those that work with me at Central High School. There are, they are literally the front line of the work we do in our classroom, and with their support, we see tremendous growth in our students. Their dedication to our common work is inspiring. I'm beyond grateful for their commitment. These young educators are often determining, though they may not know it at the time, whether or not they will go back to school to become a teacher. I know that is how I entered education myself. Previously, our TAs appreciated that they could be paid more in La Crosse schools than at other jobs in our community, but that is no longer the case. In today's job market, there are many opportunities to make similar or more money. We need quality TAs. I need quality TAs in our classrooms so that our students get the best education they deserve. Please pay them so we keep them. At Central on Friday, we had a retirement ceremony to recognize and honor the commitment that those teachers made to our students in our district. Over 100 years of experience retired on Friday. It was truly inspiring to hear them share stories of their amazing career and the memories of special times with students and colleagues. As they spoke, I kept thinking, how are we going to replace these pillars of education? What young educator do we want to come in and fill those shoes? And my final thought was, someday they will be my daughter's teachers. One of the bullet points in the mission statement for this board is that the board will create policies to ensure that resources are available to provide excellence in education. But if the best educator graduate from UWL sees that other nearby communities have committed to valuing their educators with fair and appropriate salary compensations and that those communities' salaries creep closer and closer to that of La Crosse, and with way higher property taxes in La Crosse, I'm not so sure they will choose us. We need these resources. During our last board meeting, one of my colleagues spoke about being thrilled that La Crosse honored her years of prior teaching when it came to salary. I had the same experience. Thank you for that support as I moved back home. But as you know, over the past few cycles, we have not kept up, and now we are told that inflationary wage increase is not going to get close to meeting inflation. Again, knowing that which teacher says La Crosse is my first choice. During the pandemic, we were told how much we were appreciated, that we should take care of ourselves. We were also told how unprecedented these times were and to hang in there. Yet, here we are having to fight not for a pay raise, but to keep up with inflation. We are asking you not to cost us money. We teachers plan, thrive, and shapeshift through the pandemic, and on the other side of it, we are met with a negative 2.7. In keeping with some of my colleagues' feelings on the matter, I am more than tired of empty gratitude or attempts at empathy. I want to believe. I want to know that our district is fighting for us and our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mark Ziegler.
Hello, thanks for having me. All right. My name is Mark Ziegler. I reside in the school district of West Salem. I teach at Logan High School. I'm here tonight to speak to you in regard to the current contract negotiations between the school district of La Crosse and the teachers of the students in La Crosse. There are many reasons that the current offer of 2% is not reasonable compensation for the teachers of the district, but the interaction that I'm going to share with you this evening, it's something that might have been missed in past conversations. I've taught for 30 years, been science teacher for 30 years, and taught for the last 24 years at Logan High School. As an experienced teacher, I sometimes check in with new teachers, stop by, see how they're doing, and offer support if they need any. Three weeks ago, I stopped to talk with a teacher who is in his first year at Logan, second year as a teacher, to let him know that I was really impressed with how he had worked with students and that I was glad that he had joined us at Logan. I told him I was looking forward to working with him again next year, and this led to the discussion I want to share with you. Gave me a different perspective or another perspective on some of the salary issues. This teacher told me that he was frustrated by the fact that as a new teacher with student loans to pay, he needs to spend more money to take more classes, to improve his salary, to pay his already existing loans. Now, just, just to make sure that everyone understands, his frustration isn't with taking courses to become a better educator, and it's not with that being part of the salary advancement and those things. His frustration is that his salary doesn't allow him to take classes to improve his standard of living because he can't afford to pay his student loans as it is. So then in order to get this next step, he's having to spend money that he doesn't have at that point. With the offer of 2%, which is not even the base CPI, he can't really see how he can get ahead. He's in a cycle of debt that means that buying a home or even going on vacation is really out of his reach. This educator loves to teach, but as he said to me, he said, "This is neither sustainable nor reasonable for the long term." I'm sharing this discussion with you because I feel it's important for the school board to realize that the district is going to lose teachers of all experience levels if we're not compensated appropriately. As an experienced teacher, I'm truly concerned about the loss of young, innovative educators who would love to be the teachers of our kids in the school district of La Crosse in the future, but who will not be able to remain in education due to inadequate compensation. The teacher that I described to you is an exceptionally young educator, plans to return next year, but as he stated, it's not sustainable for the long term. He's not alone in this. This loss of our young educators is another unintended but very real consequence of undervaluing the teachers in the school district of La Crosse. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carla Doolittle. Is Carla here?
My name is Carla Doolittle. I'm a business owner and homeowner on the north side of the town, and I was here to speak on the projected new high school that you want to put up. So here goes my speech unprepared because I didn't know I was going to do this on a whim today, but the building, building at capacity makes no sense to me. It makes no sense to me that there's no stats on how much it's going to cost to bus all these kids to the other side of town. That isn't included in the 194 million. I just don't understand how biking to a new school out in the middle of nowhere is going to be a good thing if you think kids are going to be biking more. We're trying to keep them in shape, aren't we? The budget for renovating the other schools is not in that 194 referendum. I'm sorry, it's not a referendum yet, is it? So 38% of the respondents were over the age of 65. My guess is they believe the newspaper and the TV. When you say that the new school will be, it, it says, "Be built with a field house and a performing arts center, including geothermal and solar, outdoor practice and competition fields." When we were at the meetings that were held at the middle school or the elementary school, we were told specifically there would be no competition field. Is that only for football and baseball, or are there going to be competition fields? I'm not sure. That's a question. I don't know the answer to. Do you? My next question would be also on the solar. At the May 7th meeting, it was discussed openly about the zero emissions that the county and the city want to do, and you stated that it was going to be way more expensive than the 194 to do a solar. The HVAC system is definitely energy efficient, you said, but not solar. So I'm kind of confused on this survey that says it be built with a field house, inferring to those people over 65 that there is going to be a field house that goes with a field for football, triac, baseball, I don't know. That's what it infers to a lot of readers, especially only newspaper and news watchers. So I think that the 38 respondents of yes are, I'd ask everybody and their mothers to talk to their mothers and their grandmothers and their grandfathers to tell them that, is that true or is that not, and where are the details of this, so that I can be educated enough to know what the right answer is? Is there an answer? Is there somewhere that states that there will be a field house or is there not? I don't know. So anyway, you told us at the May meeting that there were indigenous lands out there on that 40 acres, and I was told at that second meeting, the May 7th meeting, that there is about an acre. Do we know if the about number is correct or is it still about one acre? Do we have an answer? Sorry. I don't believe the school district has done a good enough job airing, telling folks that there's meetings, informational meetings to find out about. They posted it once on Facebook on April 20th for an April 27th and a May 3rd meeting, once. But it hits the, the news stations all the time when somebody talks about it now about, "We'll be built with a field house and solar, geothermal." I'm confused. How do you expect us taxpayers to know what the right answer is to do? I mean, I'm, I, how am I supposed to know? Where do I get this information? Where do I get the correct information? And the fact that the busing will not be added, the renovation for the schools will, is not added into that 194, I'm totally confused. How much is this going to really cost us as taxpayers? I think we need some answers. I don't know. Does anybody have any? Does anybody know where I can find some? Because I'm really disappointed in the fact that I went to both of those meetings because it is vitally important to the city, and I think that this whole new school has been just rushed, and I think we need to get the SROs back in school. I'm going to use that right now for that little tidbit. I'm a foster mom. I've done six foster kids, and if I didn't have SROs in the schools, there is no way I would go, would ever take another foster teenager, and that's what I did.
30 seconds left.
And I also, if I were to still be doing foster care, there's no way I'd be taking my teenager out to that school. I drove a kid to Onalaska for four years because that's where she was. They need to stay where they are. But anyway, back to where's the information? What's the truth? Because this doesn't sound like it to me. Sorry, I get a little worked up. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eric Martin.
Hello, I'm Eric Martin. I graduated from Logan in 94. I resided on Alaska, and I just finished my 19th year teaching social studies at Logan. Normally, I'm known for two things, being nice and being funny, but the reason that we're here tonight, all of us, is neither nice nor funny. If there were a pie chart explaining why teachers are burnt out and ready to leave our district, it would include a lack of respect from students and parents, top-down mandates, more being added to our plates, too many standardized tests, discipline problems often exacerbated by district decisions, the pandemic. These would all be slices, but the biggest slice has to be the erosion of our pay and benefits. Let me be crystal clear, on behalf of everyone seated here tonight, we do not feel valued in this district. This weekend, I took my kids to Lark Toys, and while we drove, my wife looked up jobs for me. This school year, I had two interviews for other positions, and had the second worked out, I would have been gone. I love teaching. I love my school, but I am so sick of how we're treated by this district. It's like we all live in reality, and there's this island of blissful ignorance downtown where everyone's happy and everyone loves their work, and we're just doing it for the joy. They don't, and let me prove it. They don't, and let me prove it to you. People in the audience, if you thought about leaving your job in the last couple of years, stand up. That is reality. That's reality. This inflationary pay cut impacts our morale, it impacts teacher retention, it impacts our ability to make a living. New teachers, there's some in the audience, it will cost you $30,000 over the course of your career as that pay cut compounds. Veteran teachers, the loss of a step one more year is so frustrating. One more year, we can't make our way to the top of the salary scale. And at Logan, I have coworkers with close to 25 years' experience on a 12-year scale, they're not at the top. Why would anybody want to stay here? Here's what I'm sick of. I'm sick of blame being passed on other people. Oh, teachers, if we just had a state that valued education, we'd give you a raise. We don't, and we won't. Gerrymandering has seen to that, but most other districts are giving their teachers a raise. They just have different priorities than we do. In the past five years, we bought a bar, we bought an RV, we've added several middle-level administrators, all handsomely paid, and somehow... And somehow, we have a million dollars to move Hogan to Central when we're supposedly broke. Isn't that interesting that new offices are more important than our salaries when the difference is about the same? Here's what I say, sell the bar, sell the RV, and when we right-size our schools, this place should start first. I'm sick of hearing that the CPIU raises aren't apples to apples. Every other district in the state is practically doing the right thing. I bet we could look hard and we could find some apples-to-apples matches if we really wanted to. I'm sick of teachers, if we build a new high school in five years, then we can give you a raise. Here's another reality check. Teachers in the room don't feel real great that their raises are being held hostage by a referendum that might not pass, and... And we just get to wait for the savings to roll in. Yeah, we saw the push poll that shows support at barely over 50%, but I think that's overblown based on how the questions were framed. And let's be frank, the people in the audience are going to support it if you don't support us. And let's think about this, of the district staff that live in the district, the poll showed half don't support it. Half of the teachers in our district don't support that referendum. That's mind-blowing to me. So, here we are in 2022, not '27, not in the utopian alternate reality of Hogan. You people need to figure this out. Board members, you don't work for Hogan. Hogan works for, you don't work for Hogan, Hogan works for you. Tell them that they need to try harder when you get an answer you don't like. You are the boss here. We need a plan to help teachers now, not in five years, not in 10 years, not in two years, now, where many of us will be walking out the door. We're tired of the blame being put on others.
30 seconds left.
We're tired of weak excuses. We're tired of future promises predicated on veiled threats to support a referendum. We're tired of being undervalued, and many of us are frankly tired of this district. Board members, I'll leave you with five words that probably sums up everything you're going to hear tonight, but it's just this, you need to do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lindsay Fox.
Want to follow? My name is Lindsay Fox, and I live in Onalaska. I've worked at Summit Elementary as an early childhood special education teacher for the last nine years. I still remember receiving the call saying I got the job at Summit. I was so very excited and so relieved. You see, prior to working here, I worked at the district that did not value or support its teaching staff. The year I left that district, 26% of the teaching staff left. But here I am today, nine years later, and I'm seeing the same trend I saw when I worked at my first district. People are leaving. Our people are leaving. This school year, we had 14 new staff, including a new principal at Summit. Some were new to Summit, some new to the district, and some new to teaching. It was really rough. We spent the bulk of the school year training and getting everyone on the same page with building and district-level initiatives, curriculum, classroom management, inclusive practices, and how to manage, plan for, and support students with wide ranges of academic, social, emotional, and behavioral needs. Teacher turnover is not unique to Summit. Many schools in our district are experiencing the same issue. Some of our schools see this kind of turnover every year. Why is this important? Staff turnover disrupts the continuity of students' learning experiences. It weakens students' systems of support because it takes time to build those relationships with students and families and within our community. This is extremely detrimental for students who come from trauma backgrounds and poverty. Teacher turnover also affects school climate and student learning because when high-quality, experienced teachers leave, so too does their wealth of knowledge about students and families, curriculum, and all of the school and district initiatives. Numerous studies suggest that a critical factor in determining whether educators stay at a school or a district is if they feel supported and valued by administration. At least 42 teachers have left this district already this year. Many others are still actively looking for other jobs, and every day I see another job vacancy pop up in my inbox. Our educators are continuing to retire early, leave the profession altogether, and others are being actively recruited by other districts. Our people are being actively recruited by other districts. Do you realize this? Other districts are seeing the value in our people. Our experience and our expertise makes us valuable to those other districts. Other districts are doing whatever they can to get our people to their district. Surrounding districts and districts across the state have agreed to compensate their educators with the full 4.7% CPIU increase. They have honored steps, and in some cases, they have done more, but not here. Here in La Crosse, we are told to do more with less. Year after year, we are told we do great things, we hear how much we are appreciated and are told we'd pay you more if we could. Instead, we're offered inflationary wage cuts. The last several years have been challenging, to say the least. We've worked through a pandemic, student needs academically, socially, emotionally, behaviorally are all at an all-time high. We are facing the largest teacher shortage in my career. This year, I had to fight to get my prep and my lunch because we were short-staffed most days. I have never thought more about leaving my profession than I have this year, and despite all the challenges we've faced, we continue to show up for our students and our families to ensure their needs are met every day. Every week, we've heard how great we are, how noble and impactful this work is, but actions always speak louder than words. In this district, it is becoming more obvious by the day that our people, our educators, are just a number. When we leave the profession we love, retire early, or are recruited by other districts, it is not seen as a loss. It's seen as cost savings. If that mentality continues... If that mentality continues, this will be the district of revolving doors where educators come to cut their teeth and then leave for districts where compensation keeps pace with inflation and where they feel valued and supported like the professionals they are. Nine years ago, when I came to this district, it was where every educator wanted to be. Now, it's the district many of our educators are trying to leave. If it doesn't matter what kind of educators you have in this district, continue doing what you're doing. But if you are truly committed to attracting and retaining high-quality educators, the very least you must do is prioritize and provide compensation that keeps up with inflation. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jessica Ingleson. Don't worry about it.
My name is Jessica Ingleson. I live in the La Crescent-Hocah School District. I'm a teacher in the La Crosse School District, and I'm here to speak about educator salaries. I encourage my students to be good human beings, and sometimes that means doing scary things like being honest, telling the truth, and speaking up to the people we are supposed to be able to trust the most. Tonight, I stand before you, taking my own advice. With each second that passes, my heart rate will climb at an alarming rate and at no fault of my own, but because I place trust in the very people before me for making a decision to have students go back to school and continue to stay in school when cases were higher than when we were virtual. My unfortunate truth is that I had well over 20 direct contacts the week that I got COVID, none of which I was told about them being direct contacts. Little did I know that January 8th, 2022, would change my life and steal my independence. I maxed out my deductible and coinsurance and doctor's visits, being gaslighted, and told that I was fine. I knew I wasn't, so I went to the ER, then I found a pulmonologist that recognized the signs of POTS, postural orthostatic tachycardia syndrome and post-COVID syndrome, and got me started with cardiopulmonary rehab three days a week, 34 sessions, and referred me to the Rochester COVID Research Clinic. After firing the department that was gaslighting me and establishing care and a new one, I learned that it's possible for COVID to change your cells at the mitochondrial level. Why am I sharing this? Well, because my medical journey has cost me thousands of dollars in medical care because I trusted the decisions of others. After being hit with this, I found out about losing Mayo as a covered provider, but not to worry, because I could still have the option to pay more to still have access to that coverage. How can I not worry? Between Mayo Rochester literally being my only lifeline and the added extra expense, how is that proposed solution any true comfort? Why am I sharing this information? Well, because I'm a hard-working employee who up until now hasn't complained about any of this to my employer and has simply figured it out, while the debt continues to grow, knowing that my future paychecks will be smaller and stretched even thinner due to the changes in our insurance plans and expecting a reset of my deductible at the end of June. This means continuing to add to that medical debt over something that I caught at work doing a job that was for the kids because I was labeled an essential worker. The next hit came when we got notified that the district would not be honoring the CPIU increase of 4.7%. Not even a raise, but quite literally an increase to keep pace with inflation of the dollar, something that would help people like me to maybe stay afloat in a year where the hits just keep coming. Other professions are giving step increases each year automatically to honor years of service, but here I've come to notice this is rare, and I dare say almost impossible to do, without teachers incurring the expense and debt of continuing education credits. We are teachers. We're used to having our budget slashed and having to do more with less, but at what cost? Paying for our supplies out of our own pockets, students not having those supplies, not doing certain projects or experiential learning. What does this actually say to the teachers of the school district of La Crosse? Is this really the way that appreciation for some of the roughest COVID years of teaching is going to be shown to those teachers? We adapted over a weekend and made online learning happen with little to no research, resources. We learned a platform with little to no training. We donated extra time and burned the candle on both ends, and some of us got told that we weren't working hard enough and needed to add more time to our day despite already putting in nine to 10 hours a day, but we did it anyway. Many of us got voluntold that we were added to extra committees despite already being stretched too thin, but we did it even if the quality and output from us wasn't our best. This year, I have been threatened. I have had to clear my room to keep students safe. I have had to distract students while another student detonated and trashed my room. I have been swore at, kicked, given the one-finger salute, and even spit at because my students endure a trauma in their lives that I will never be able to fully wrap my head around. But I will forever continue to try to be their constant because that's what I've committed to. But yet, we continue to hear the phrase, "The best that we can do is 2%." I get that times are hard, but teachers have been put through enough the last three years, and we have proven our worth, and we are worth more than the 2% CPIU increase. We are La Crosse, and we are worth the 4.7.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brock Harney.
Hi there, my name is Brock Harney. I reside in the town of Campbell, the school district of La Crosse. Just completed my 11th year of teaching in the district at Logan High School, where I teach social studies, primarily U.S. government. I have two young children. The oldest just completed her 4K school year at Summit Elementary. These things, especially my children and their future in the district, make the topic of adequate staff compensation extremely personal to me. I'm a stakeholder in this district in more than one way. I teach my students that local government's really where the rubber meets the road. Local elected offices like school boards, they have the opportunity to make far more impact on a day-to-day lives than anything at the state or national level. Their position's of trust. The community elects people to put their priorities into action. La Crosse has historically been supportive of its schools and values providing students with high-quality staff. Recent actions by the district, which the board oversees and is responsible for, have failed to place this high enough on the priority list. Cost-of-living increases have been treated like a bonus if there's anything left over after other priorities have been met. Step advancements is non-existent, so much so it's not even seriously discussed. Teachers, TAs, administrative assistants, food service personnel, custodians, even administrators are leaving. It's not hard to figure out why. The high rate of turnover hurts our schools, it hurts our kids. It hurts the kids that I work with during my day, and it hurts my kids that are expected to thrive in an environment where we won't take care of the people doing the job the district expects to provide. Before I wrote down my thoughts here tonight, I stopped and wondered if I was being selfish. Was I not thinking of the bigger picture? I wondered if it was selfish to continue doing the job I love, that I was made to do, in the building I love with the people that I see struggling in the community where my wife Heather and I have chose to raise our kids. Am I being selfish to continue to do that job, knowing it means continued financial stress at home, continued turnover, and declining morale among the people I work with? And continued frustration of people in a position to do something about it, telling me to wait for some future windfall? It feels like the equivalent of thoughts and prayers. I don't enjoy having this view of this tonight. I'd much rather celebrate all the great things that our students, including our recent graduates, had accomplished this last school year. They have done so in some really difficult times. In those difficult times, the community asks educators to step up to the plate and find a way. As the old saying goes, where there's a will, there's a way. During the pandemic, there was a will to take care of the students in our buildings, and we found a way to get it done. We shoulder tremendous burden in many ways, many of which you've heard about. We went to the mat for this district. Now that our educators and support staff are struggling, we're asking you to step up to the plate and find a way. I know there's a way, I'm wondering if there's a will. Educators are a pretty understanding bunch of people. We sort of major in overcoming barriers and thriving during hardship. It's what we do. We're good at it. If we're here sharing this with you, the issue's serious and it requires attention. Our staff feels disconnected from the school board. I believe our last staff board linkage at Logan High School occurred before the pandemic. We're, I think, around the calendar next school year. There's been a few things have changed since then, it's a long time. I think those meetings occur with far too little frequency. I might suggest you revisit how that schedule's structured. At our current rate, some of our staff will be hired and leave the profession before another linkage occurs. Just know that when one of us takes time to write you an email, it could correspond another way. It's frequently before picking kids up, while making dinner, after getting our kids down to bed. That's before we probably work on our schoolwork till 10 or 11 at night so we can be ready for the next day. It's not a punch-the-clock kind of job. Hearing nothing back at all when we do that furthers that disconnect. We want to know what values you're lending voice to on our board and what perspectives are informing your decisions. Many of us are stakeholders in this district. Many of us live in the community, we have our kids go to our schools. We care deeply about how this district looks for students and educators in both the short and long term. I'll leave you with this. Educators and support staff had the will and found a way to answer the bell during the last few years. I hope you have the will, and I urge you to find a way to take care of the people that work with our kids. Stand up for people to do the jobs that are the core purpose of the school district. Thank you. I'll be submitting my remarks to you electronically.
Thank you very much.
I do appreciate your feedback.
Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Mitch Olson.
Hi, I'm Mitch Olson. I reside in the De Soto School District. I'm a teacher and a coach at La Crosse Central High School. I grew up in a family of educators. Both my parents, as well as both my grandmothers, were teachers, and it's something that I knew from an early age that I wanted to do. I wanted to follow... I wanted to follow in their footsteps, and I wanted to be a positive influence in the lives of children. When I got to college, I continued upon this path despite the advice of my parents circa 2011. They told me I can still make a difference in people's lives without having to be a teacher. They wanted to see me happy, but they also wanted to see me be financially stable. I didn't believe them when they said just how hard it would be to start a family, pay off student loans, and buy a reasonable, modest house. Right now, I have a beautiful family. Not even a dent in my student loans. I'm about to start my eighth year of teaching, and I can't afford a house. But it wasn't really upon having my own children that I started to question my own career path. Being on the school board, I'm sure you're all well aware that our insurance plan and benefits that our district offers to my wife, who is also an employee of this district, and me, isn't exactly friendly to those looking to have children. Partner that with an inflationary wage cut while other districts around us are gaining at least the 4.7%. Quite frankly, this whole situation is a slap in the face to educators. I worked my butt off to be the best teacher and coach and supportive adult that I can be for students, but it's gotten to the point where I have to ask myself, is doing this negligent to my own family? If I put the same amount of time and effort that I spend teaching and coaching into any other field, I would be rich. Or at least what would be rich to someone coming from the education field. Right now, it's awfully tempting to take someone up on an offer where I can make more money and have a whole lot less headaches. The last two years have been unprecedented in education. Teachers have never been asked to do as much as they are now, all while having less. The 4.7% is more than deserved. It's downright disrespectful if we don't get it. We're responsible for cultivating our most natural resource, our youth. And we're being compensated as though our efforts are inconsequential. I'm disappointed, hurt, and honestly, a little angered by the state of education and the direction of our district. I love my job. I love the young people that I work with, but I can only take so much, and I'm not alone. And an inflationary wage cut will drive quality, experienced teachers out of our district or out of the field completely. An inflationary wage cut is demoralizing, and I'm not sure just how much more I can take. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Keys.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Keys, and I reside in the La Crescent-Hocca School District. I am a 27-year veteran of the school district of La Crosse. I've taught both 7th grade and 3rd, and I'm currently 3rd at Northwoods. Many of my colleagues have already eloquently addressed the board on the subject of teacher compensation. So as I was preparing my remarks for tonight, I was hoping that the magic words would come to me to help you understand how vital it is for you to compensate teaching staff with the 4.7 CPIU. But I don't think there's anything really new that I can say. So instead, I'd like to offer you an experience. I'd like to offer you an invitation. Come into our schools. Not just for a walkthrough on the first day, but really spend time seeing what it takes to run a school day effectively. Truly get to know the joys and the sorrows, and the celebrations, and the challenges that make up our days. Observe the gamut of abilities and behaviors that we interact with on a daily basis. Every single one of you has been in several classrooms throughout your own education. And sometimes that leads people to believe that they understand what it takes to be an educator. However, unless you work in education, you really don't know what it takes to do our jobs well. While spending time in our schools, you are likely- While spending time in our schools, you are likely to observe behaviors of all sorts. Because I've been in the district for 27 years, I have seen how drastically negative behaviors in our schools are escalating. Yet I really don't have any new resources with which to deal with them. I have kids in mental health crisis, but I do not have formal mental health training to give the kids the support they really need. Instead, I've been told to add social-emotional learning lessons to my already-packed day. So what should I not teach from the rest of the required curriculum? So I can teach that to children. And if I continue to take an inflationary pay cut, when would educators plan for those extra lessons if they need to take on a second job? So another important point you will notice if you choose to spend time in the schools is how busy teachers are during the school day. More and more is being required of us every year, yet at times you choose to effectively give us a wage cut as our salaries are not keeping pace with inflation. I teach more curriculum now than I ever have in this school district. I have more paperwork, more information to enter into computer grading systems, and more hats to wear than ever. And yet, I get a "thanks, we appreciate you" email instead of compensation to simply keep up with inflation. A thank you from the children and families I serve goes a long way. A thank you from someone who says they appreciate me but gives me more to do without fair compensation doesn't go very far at all. I heard somewhere that what is tolerated today becomes accepted tomorrow. We can no longer tolerate this treatment of educators in our district. It seems as though you have come to accept that we will just sit back and take whatever you give us. After taking it for 27 years, I'm done. I'm finally standing up to say enough is enough. You need to not only say you appreciate us, you need to show it through compensation that at the very least reflects inflation. And like a colleague said at a previous board meeting, paying us what we are actually worth is a different conversation altogether. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Beth Becker.
Good evening. Yes, I'm Elizabeth Becker. I teach at Logan Middle School and Northwoods International School here in La Crosse. And I want to say first that thank you for all the people that read the letter that I wrote a couple weeks ago and responded to it. You know, your comments show that we're all on the same team, that we all care about education, we care about kids. So thank you for those comments. I read them today. I appreciated them a lot. I'm just here to reiterate what many have been saying today, that I'm concerned about our salary and the retention of teachers. I was hired right out of college. This was my first interview in this very same building. And I was hired as a .5 orchestra teacher, so I'd much rather be playing my viola right now than talking to you. And I was assigned two schools, Roosevelt and Harris Spence. I was expected to have about 50 students. I had 85 kids sign up at Spence, and I had 25 at Roosevelt. So right off the bat, I was almost at full-time. I had to travel every day. I had to teach every day. And you know, I love the kids, I love my colleagues, I like La Crosse. But I was really starting to wonder, you know, if this was the job for me, if this was the school for me, not the job, but the school district. Anyway, things did get better. I did get upped that first year a little bit to .6. And towards the end of the year, my supervisor at the time was saying, "Well, you know, you really didn't have to teach all of those kids. You could have just taught .6 of them." And I didn't know what to say. I mean, I'm a new teacher, and I was dumbfounded. I thought, really? I don't have to teach all of them? If I didn't teach them all, who would I pick to teach? And would I not? I mean, how would I do that? So that was kind of a low point for me when I was really questioning whether I should stay in the school district. But at the end of the year, I was increased to .8. And the next year, I got another school and more students, but that was okay. And eventually, I got to full-time. And throughout my time here, I really have loved the students and the schools and my colleagues and everything even more. And this past year was very rough. It seems like I worked twice as hard and got half the results, but you know, we kept going and we pulled through it. So after 33 years of teaching, I am glad that I made the decision to stay in the school district. But I'm very concerned that many are not. Many are leaving. Every single day, it seems like there's not enough subs. And we're frantically trying to cover history. I went to social studies. I was helping with, you know, all different classes besides my own. And so I'm just very concerned that the school district will make the right choice. They'll keep supporting teachers. And I'll be glad that I am continuing to teach here and that my 33 years devoted to the students here will continue. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joanne Ziegler.
Hello. I am retired. I retired just this year. And I am Joanne Ziegler. I've taught at Summit Elementary. I've taught for 23 years in the school district, 40 years overall. And dear members, thank you for having me speak today. I appreciate that. May I first begin with a big thank you for the opportunity to address you. And I guess I remember our retiree dinner on the 25th, and I do thank you so much. Dr. Jimenez, I thank you from the bottom of my heart because you spoke to us with great appreciation. You spoke to us with support. You spoke to us with respect. You noted that you have pride and you have gratitude for all the good teachers that you have had in your life. So the reason why I'm speaking tonight is that I think the gratitude, the support, the pride that we've had all these years is starting to diminish. I do feel that we have really a pandemic in and of itself in our buildings. I believe that, I feel that there are people that, right now, next year, and in future years, need to have that tone carried on that Dr. Jimenez did for us at our meeting, at our special retirement event. I think that tone needs to be lifted in volume, louder, louder. And I think all the great staff, all of our TAs, everyone, needs to hear that you appreciate us, that you have pride for us, that you can show that gratitude when we leave. We need to continue that. So I guess I had a little segment here of how I started in the district. I feel like in the 80s, when I moved here, I had three years of jobs outside the school district. I taught another 14 years waiting for an interview for La Crosse. I taught in Head Start. I taught at Western Technical College. I got that one interview in August. And I remember I competed for a .50 to get this job. And there were so many, so many applicants for that position. Once I was hired, I realized that I was valued. We went on a riverboat ride. We had 30-plus people that started with us. And at that moment, I felt like I was proud. I was respected. I was appreciated. So I just recall all of that. And I just think that we are at a time in this school district where all my other colleagues have said we have increasingly low morale. I see it. I see people not wanting to sub. We have been so fortunate to have a few retired people that have come back to sub, even during the COVID, even during our tough times. But I do feel that that is really lacking. We used to have four pages of subs to look at. Now we have a page. And these subs need to be shown that they are valued as well. We need to have enough people that are covering all of the positions rather than our principal having to say to us, "This so-and-so LMC director will go and cover." "This music teacher." "This orchestra teacher." "This anyone else that doesn't have a classroom is going to go in and fill in for one classroom of kids." Can you imagine what that does for those children when you have all of the turnover and the lack of their teacher being provided a good sub? So we need more substitutes. Reason one, why our morale is low. We need more subs. We need to diminish that principal list every morning that was saying to us, "This is what you're doing for the day. Here is the teacher's plans. You're going to fill in for an hour here. You're going to fill in for the next hour." We need to also, reason two, realize that budgets are tight. We do know that. We realized the COVID pandemic packages were short-term. We realized that we had to make a list of needs and wants when we were reaching the end of the year last year. But we have a need to use any funds available. Find a way to meet the needs of those irreplaceable, experienced staff in all levels of our district buildings. We need to know that budgets can be made. We can figure it out. Not everybody's going to agree, but please stand up, please, to compensate staff and substitutes. Stand up to increase the morale in our schools so everyone has pride.
Our next speaker is Allison Swan.
My name is Allison Swan. I live here in La Crosse and just completed my fourth year here within the school district, my eighth year total, and I'm a proud teacher at Cooley-Montessori. I grew up as a child of a public educator. And as anyone who has had a parent in the education field will tell you, we know firsthand that you do not go into this profession hoping to get rich. That being said, I never actually expected that my income would barely help provide for my family of four. My husband and I are both true professionals that work in careers where we never thought this would be our situation. Over the past four years here, I've seen my paychecks cover less and less of my family's basic necessities. Please keep in mind that we are not a family that lives outside of our means, by any means. My husband and I were very understanding when we were not given a raise due to the start of the pandemic and additional costs that the district incurred at that time. We set aside our dream of buying a house, that you're hoping that in the future, we would be able to start saving up for a down payment again. In the past two years, though, we began to notice that my paychecks, which used to cover our rent, utilities, and our groceries, weren't even making a dent anymore. We had to make difficult decisions, like a lot of other families, to cut out extras and luxuries. And we were happy to do it if it meant that we were able to get our finances back on track. But that never happened. We had to not only dip into what we had saved for a down payment on a house, but we had to rely on our credit cards significantly more than we ever had before and incurred thousands of dollars of debt just to afford to have a house and food for our family. Our dream of owning a home is now years away, if it's even going to happen at all. The district has offered us a 2% raise for the next year, but inflation has gone up 4.7%, which means that my paycheck will cover 2.7% less than it already does. How am I supposed to provide for my family? How are we supposed to provide for our families? I've already got a second part-time job, which takes me away from my five-year-old and one-year-old more than before, and it increases our cost of childcare, which is another expense that we all know is drastically rising every year. My husband and I recently took out a loan to consolidate our debts in the hope that we could limit what we were spending each month just to make ends meet. But we don't know if that is truly going to help us in the future if we don't have enough money coming in from our jobs. I'm here tonight to ask you to do what's right for the people who work for the school district, to match what is coming with inflation, and to provide money so that my family and others like mine don't have to experience what we're doing now. And so that we don't have to question, why do we have a professional degree if we still can't provide for our families? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We will move on with the superintendent's consent agenda. The consent agenda is a mechanism used by the board to deal with routine business that must come before the body. Are there any items that the members want to remove from the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the items on the superintendent's consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Korberg and seconded by Dr. Cooper Stoll. We will approve the items on the superintendent's consent agenda as presented unless there's a motion, objection, excuse me, an objection. Is there an objection? Hearing no objection, then we will approve the items on the superintendent's consent agenda and we'll move on to the board consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the items on the board consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Korberg and seconded by Mr. Spivey. We will approve the items on the board consent agenda unless there's objection. Is there objection? Hearing no objection, we approve the items on the board consent agenda. And we'll move on to the matters reserved for board action and the naming of the Logan High School Field House. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Engel.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we recently had the passing of a very esteemed teacher and icon of the North Side, Steve Hall. And it was presented to me as a, as a request to investigate potentially naming some of our facilities after him. And I would invite up Mr. Tony DiPaolo just to talk about the process that was used and then maybe a little bit on the impact that he's had on the North Side and Logan High School.
Thank you. Yeah. Per board policy, we put together a committee consisting of community members, parents, administration, staff of all kinds, and then a various number of students from our student body. And overwhelmingly, the support, just anyone who knew Mr. Hall just knew the profound impact that he had on the North Side and particularly Logan High School. Lived a life of service to his community, his country and Logan High School and only fitting that he, he be recognized in some way. And the Field House, we chose the Field House because it's one of our most frequented facilities by students and it's one of the, the only of the three that is not currently named. We have Swanson Field and we have the Wees Theater. And those are our two other main facilities that are used by our students. And so, we would like to honor him by naming our Field House in his memory.
Mr. Genevao or others?
I'm Terry Erickson and the president of the Logan Booster Club. And I would just like to say on behalf of the entire Booster Club, we fully endorse the proposal to rename it the Steve Hall Field House.
Mr. Genevao, do you have anything to add?
I think Tony did a, Tony did a great job. Thank you.
It's with honor that I make a motion to approve the Steve Hall Field House as the name for the Field House at Logan High School.
Second.
Is there any comments or discussion on this from the board?
Well, I, I would just like to say, this is a no-brainer. If anybody has any, any affiliation with Logan, you know that Steve was there pretty much for everything. But not only that, he was there for the students and the, and the kids. He's a, a great icon for the North Side and I wholeheartedly support this and applaud the, the naming of the Field House for him.
Any other comments? So, moved by Mr. Korberg and seconded by Mr. Abraham. We will move to approve the Steve Hall Field House as the name for the Field House at Logan High School. Ms. Stagerwald, I'm assuming this will just take an I and A. We do not need a roll call. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion has carried. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. DiPaolo. Well, we got the banner, a banner.
I'm getting ready to get started, so I'll put that up and then we'll work on it. Thank you.
We will move on to the information items. And the first information item is Operational Expectation Monitoring Report, OE2, Emergency Superintendent Succession. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Engel.
As we often do, we're undergoing monitoring in order to demonstrate that we've been in compliance with the board's values through operational expectations. This one is relatively simple. It simply asks that the superintendent create a succession list with at least two names that will fill in for the superintendent on an emergency basis. This list will be filed in the superintendent's office and made readily available to board members and administrators. And the evidence is listed there. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? Not hearing any. Pretty straightforward operational expectation. In regards to this, I'm assuming, given that there's no questions, that the board feels we're pretty much in compliance with this one. Not hearing anything. So, let's move on then to the 2022-2023 Proposed Budget Administrative Goals. And Dr. Engel.
So, this is part of a longer monitoring process that we use in developing our budget book. I'll ask Ms. Spring just to comment on the development of that book.
Sure. So, as you know, it will come to you in completion in October. However, along the way, we will introduce parts of it that our budget supports our goals. So, this is just one of those pieces of that whole budget document.
So, these goals are related to the school board's results policy. The first, the mega results, students will discover and develop their talents and abilities and will be prepared to pursue their dreams and aspirations while contributing effectively to their local, state, national and global communities. The administrative goals for that are all students graduate college and career-ready and student outcomes are not correlated with student demographics. The second, school board results policy is academic performance. Students will demonstrate a high level of individual success using multiple measures of performance. We could have goals for all sorts of things for this, but in an effort to keep things simple, we have focused on reading. All students will read proficiently. And school board results policy three involves citizenship. Students will demonstrate the educational, social and cultural competency necessary to participate as contributing citizens in diverse global communities. And the administrative goals there are all students feel like they belong and all students are engaged. I would just add that for number five, our focus this year will be around attendance. We've seen a substantial increase in excessive absences, not only in our school district, but across the state, across the nation, and as I found out this last week, across the world, it's been a symptom of the pandemic and impacts learning. The first thing is to be there. And so that'll be a large effort of ours over this next year is to find effective interventions for students that aren't present regularly. So, those are the administrative goals.
With that exception of that book of attendance, are there any other changes from last year?
There are not.
Other questions from the board?
Just for, I guess from a record standpoint, and these goals then kind of predict what happens for next year's budget? Am I understanding that correctly?
They tie into it, yes. So, as it relates to the attendance piece, we're going to be providing more attention to that. It won't necessarily always be reflected in exact dollars and cents, but it will be impacting people's attention and what they're working on. So, differential use of time. Another example, all students read proficiently. With our ESAR funds, over the last two years, we invested heavily in a reading three sixteen program and Orton Gillingham training for phonics for students in kindergarten through third grade. And so that's another example of how that is implemented in, in real life based on these administrative goals.
Thank you. Other questions from the board members? Hearing none?
Okay, we have none.
Oh.
I just, a clarification point. So, the budget starts July first, but we don't approve it till October. Is that correct?
So, budgets are weird in Wisconsin, everywhere really, but the fiscal year is July first to June thirtieth. But the, the information they give us doesn't come until at the soonest October fifteenth. So, we don't know our property values in our school district until October fifteenth. The levy has to be certified by the last Monday in October. And so, within our state statutes, there's this understanding that you're going to start spending money before you have approved the budget in, in October. Traditional school districts, as they kind of, the, the most simplest form of them, they would often have an annual meeting in July shortly after the start of the fiscal year to authorize the budget for the year. That felt a little more normal, but they still couldn't certify their levy until October. We're the legacy of a city school and so our organization is a little different and so we don't go through an annual meeting process. But we are obligated to approve a preliminary budget in the spring at some point in advance of July one, knowing that we have almost none of the relevant information to determine a final budget at the end of October. The key drivers being whatever the state legislature does for the biennium, which should be figured out by July one every two years, but often isn't. Student headcount, our FTEs and enrollments on the third Friday count in September, we really don't know our funding until that's in. And then property tax valuations, which affects the, the mill rate and other things that comes in October. Yeah, there's a lot to it.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
And within those projected budgets, I assume that we kind of account for what might be the inflation costs earlier on?
Yes. So, and, and those are estimates. You know, right now, our estimate for next year for inflationary costs for like utilities is, is pretty substantial, a pretty large increase in costs for those. You know, we start to try and factor that into materials costs as well. You know, if we bought, you know, twenty pencils last year, we'll only be able to buy eighteen for the same amount of money this year, this next year. So, those things are tried to factor in as best we can.
Hearing none, we'll move on to the results monitoring report, our three point two, involve citizenship. Dr. Engel?
So, this is another monitoring report that we bring up every year. And for this, Dr. Mike Lahuckey will present the information. He's been tapped with leading this endeavor. I'll turn it over to Dr. Harz, see if he has anything to add as Dr. Lahuckey makes his walk-up.
Well, I think based on the report, you're going to see a little bit about ACP and the school report card information, some co-curricular enrollment. And I was just trying to stall long enough for Dr. Lahuckey to make his way through the robust crowd, so here he is.
Yeah. When I wanted to make a run like that, I was hoping it was a Price is Right moment rather than a board report, but. So, results policy three point two, demonstrate effective skills and team as well as individual endeavors. We have four indicators that we, that I'm going to present tonight. That's up from two from the last year. So, we have some, two new indicators to take a look at. The first one is co-curricular participation. The percent of students involved in two or more co-curricular activities will increase. If you take a look at our middle school and high school, you can see the high school participation was pretty flat. We have about twenty percent of our students participate in two or more activities. However, the biggest change we saw was at the middle school level. We saw nearly double the amount of participation in our middle school for co-curriculars. If broken down by reference group, comparing the two years, you could see each and every reference group has increased their percentage of participation. And generally speaking, when it comes to co-curricular, that's where we're less, or the, less disproportionate. Generally, our data for participation amongst reference groups is rather equal. Do you have any questions about indicator one?
I have a quick question, Dr. Lahuckey. I know that measuring co-curricular involvement has at times been a challenge. Schools have done that in different kinds of ways. Can you speak, especially for new board members, can you speak to how that data is collected?
Sure. So, when you look at participation rates in Skyward, so student participation is documented in Skyward and the reports are filtered through there. Skyward is our information system in the district and it's effective in being able to break down reference groups to be able to provide that information to you. When you see data that doesn't, isn't broken down by reference groups, generally speaking, it's collected outside of our Skyward system. For example, when we talk about citizen science, results policy three point three, or some of these other measures that are just generally reported outside of, that, that's the reason There is a link to all the six twelve opportunities for our students. That list is growing every year, which is great. Co-curricular participation has been marked as meets reasonable. The second indicator is academic and career planning. This one is a carryover from the previous year as well. Over ninety-five percent of full-time enrolled students in grades six through twelve will complete the assigned academic and career planning benchmark. For new board members, this is a, this is an ambitious goal. And last year, my presentation was a plan in that there was a committee working to try to firm up what each grade level looked like as far as a benchmark indicator. Our middle schools and high schools each did different things in different grade levels and for the most part, we have some consistency amongst our school so that it's a guaranteed experience no matter where and what school your student is in. For the most part, if you do look at the data for sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth and eleventh grade and twelfth, we are meeting that ninety-five percent benchmark. We do have some opportunities. For example, the CRVA, we had some outreach work we need to do there. Candidly, we did have some addition to our counseling staff as the CRVA went on throughout the year. And that's generally a driver in ACP work is, is in addition to the classroom teacher. So, the other data point that I would point out is the seventh grade time management lesson in Zelo realigned. So, that, that, that benchmark will be once throughout sixth through eighth grade and that happened after data collection occurred. So, that's why you see kind of a inconsistent data mark there. You will notice with this data, a, a change from other board reports, or if this is your first report looking at data, there's also a reference group size, which if you just have the percentage, of course, if you only have twenty students, for example, who identify as Native American or Alaskan native, just an increase of one or two really skyrockets that percentage. So, having not only the percentage, but the group size will help give, I think, the board a better picture of what that data really looks like for each group. Do you have any, any questions about indicator two?
Questions?
I just ask from last year's data, maybe you said this, with ACP, we did not reach ninety-five percent last year, correct?
No, we, we didn't have even identified benchmarks for each grade level last year. So, we had some inconsistent data within Zelo and especially with our counseling meetings. It was just, we just had to get on the same page of what grade level each event should occur.
Thank you.
The third indicator is a new indicator. So, this was added to our three point two this year. With standards-based learning at our elementary, what we do is we try to suss out behavior from learning. And that's the same with secondary as well. So, we have essential standards and ICAN statements that provides clarity for our students and staff as far as what expectations are in, in a class and to pull out some of those secondary, yet important, aspects of education. So, these indicators are still a bit raw at this point. There is a standards-based learning committee that has worked to at least generate some initial statements, which are engaged learning, respectful and challenged, and those statements are listed below. The upcoming year will be a, a good opportunity for this work to flesh out as we do our practice year of standards-based grading at our secondary. Student, our staff are going to be able to provide some feedback as far as what are the holes, what are some things we should add to this, how can these statements change and also develop those rubrics so there's And also develop those rubrics so there's consistency amongst our classrooms as far as what we're looking for for students, that clarity piece, and that the data that will then be reported to the board will be more consistent. In full transparency, because next year is a practice year, next year you'll probably see the rubrics along with the progress that's made, but data won't come until 2023, 24, where we can pull that information from the school report card, the first year of standards-based learning. So this is an indicator that's in progress, like we've seen with some of the other board ones, but we'll continue to work on those.
So then I would argue that maybe instead of marking it as reasonable, we should probably mark it as NA, that it is in progress at this point as opposed to marking it as reasonable, because there's no data to actually measure at this point, since it's in progress. Would that make sense?
Something we've done before, absolutely. The last indicator is a new indicator for this particular board results policy 3.2. It is, if I can get the wording, the percentage of graduating students successfully completing a youth apprenticeship will increase over the previous year. Well, this, this one's COVID-related, right? So we look at 2020 and 21, there weren't a lot of employers or students very interested in a workplace environment placement, whereas this year we were able to move that number up from three completed apprenticeships to 25. You can see, although we have increased the amount, our growth area has to be the type of students or the reference groups that are participating in there. So once you know, you can do something about that. So that data is there, and hopefully we can see some progress in, in the students that are taking our youth apprenticeships for next year. Building relationships in the community, the more employers that know that we're open for business and working with them, the more opportunities we have to, to make those connections. On the back, this one, this is a report I did not create. It's one that comes from the Wisconsin Youth Apprenticeship Program, and I thought it would just be interesting to share. If, if you would grill me on the finer points of how this has developed, I would tell you I'd have to come back to you. This is just a generic report that we received. Where I look at it is what kind of apprenticeships are we having good connections with already? And what are some opportunities for improvement? So that pie chart, I think, is pretty important for us to take a look at. With that, hospitality, lodging, and tourism is our sweet spot in La Crosse, which is ironic, because we have a health science academy. I would have expected to see some other opportunities shine. So we'll continue to work in that particular area. But I wanted to show you this report, because I think there's some interest in it.
I would argue along with the Health Science Academy, the ACE Academy.
Correct, absolutely. We just toured the house the other day. It's well done. I'm trying to complete a house myself, and I was looking at, seeing if I could recruit some of the students, so.
Absolutely.
I have a question. I'm questioning Dr. Engel. So one of the things that Dr. Lahackey, that you pointed out is that clearly when you look at reference groups, there's a concern there with those youth apprenticeships. But I don't see that as a measurement on that monitoring report. I see the specifics are, that we're increasing the number in general. But even in your administrative goals that you list that, and I just had that right in front of me, that student outcomes are not correlated with student demographics. So I'm just curious as to why that's not more, why that isn't, that isn't part of the metrics then.
Sure, we could certainly add that in as something explicit. It kind of undergirds all of our work, you know, so it's something we're always looking at. That's why we disaggregate that. And so even if we, you know, increase each year, unless we're increasing our proportionality, we wouldn't feel satisfied with that either, you know? So it can easily be a part of the indicator, but it, I guess, at this point, I think, because it's something that the board is always focused on, it almost goes without saying, that said, you have to say that stuff too.
Exactly. I mean, I think clearly it ties in with a strategic plan for equity. And I think as a board, we would need to, as a parliamentary matter, make that decision of whether or not to do that. But I think that codifying that would be important, especially for boards going forward.
Absolutely.
So yeah, just to, just to be clear, Dr. Kuprissol, what I'm hearing from you is that this may be an opportunity to maybe review our 3.2 and make some changes to the language there so that we can codify what it is we're actually wanting as a measurement.
Well, I think particularly, since we're seeing such disproportionality with that one, I think it's something for the board to discuss.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. And that may be something to bring up at the next board meeting. So, sounds like a plan. Other comments or questions?
I would just ditto that. Yeah, I would just ditto that, because at first, when I was looking at this and I was seeing, like, you know, the NA in different areas, and I was wondering, will we then just do what we just suggested during indicator three for indicator four? But after hearing that explanation come, I think it's just time for us to revisit that.
Yeah, I think that the beauty of these reports is that, you know, the board has decided what it is that we want to measure. So as we determine that there may be things that we need to change, or that maybe times have changed and we need to revisit, this would be a good time to revisit, so. Ms. Berkadall?
Thanks. Still feels weird to talk. From what I understand, students who identify as LGBTQ suffer disproportionately from mental health struggles. And so I was wondering, with some of these indicators, is it possible to track their participation?
It's hard, because I do pull this information from Skyward, which is self-identified. And generally, that's a more difficult. We do track that in our student survey that's given. We provide some opportunity there. Dr. Harcey also reports on a youth risk behavior survey that has some of that information as well. But when it's our students going through Skyward, we generally don't ask those questions on the front end. And they're documented. Their parents generally fill out it for them.
Other questions?
But when stu, I should add, but when students can fill it out, then that's when we add in those questions to be able to break things down a little bit differently.
Hearing no other questions then. Thank you, Dr. Lahackey. Appreciate it. So I'm hearing from the board, at this point, given the language of indicator four, that we probably feel comfortable with the way our 3.2 is worded, and changing indicator three to NA, given the fact that that is a new indicator that is not fully fleshed out yet. Sounds good?
Yeah, I concur with that.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. So now we'll move on to the achievement gap reduction report, and I'm assuming Dr. Lahackey will be helping us out with this one too?
Yes, tonight is another episode of the Dr. Lahackey Show that said, the reason this one comes to the board, it doesn't fit within our traditional monitoring. So it kind of sits outside of that. The reason why is it's mandated by state law. So twice a year, I don't know, twice a year we have to report. Annually, we have to report to the school board. Twice a year, we send data to the state. So Dr. Lahackey is presenting on our AGR results for the school year.
Previously, this program was known as Sage. And Sage had specific limits to it, where it was all about classroom size at the early elementary, 18 to 1. Over the years, it evolved into AGR, the Achievement Gap Reduction, which allowed some flexibility with class size, but in return, you had to comply with one of three areas. One was, well, you could stay with the class sizes of 18 to 1 or 30 to 2. The second is to have instructional coaches available to staff. And the third is individual tutoring. Historically, and last year was no exception, we used instructional coaching as our means of compliance for AGR. We met to choose the indicators that we use to report to the state regarding our progress for our K through 3 students and results I have here today. These are particularly interesting, I think, is because we're starting to see that post-pandemic-type academic. Remember, that's only one side of the coin. The socio-emotional learning aspects of it and the challenges that face aren't represented in this data, but certainly do exist. However, we do get to see some of the academic data that's starting to emerge now. Previously, we used an assessment, K through 8, called STAR. STAR is a really good universal screener, and it ranks in sorts. It's a screener. We did a vendor fair, this was two years ago, and K through 8 decided to go with iReady as the, as the new universal screener. They're different. iReady is more comprehensive. It is a diagnostic, meaning that not only do you get that rank and sort experience, but you also get what standards might need some extra support, or what standards students are excelling at, which gives instructional data to staff. June 2nd, we just had our training with our student success coaches getting ready for next year. There'll be an optional, it's called Standards Mastery, which allows more opportunities if staff choose to take a deeper dive on a particular standard. If they're unsure on what learning looks like for a particular student on a particular standard, they would have that opportunity starting next year. What's interesting also about the iReady data is that it's based on the end-of-grade level standard. So it is typical to see in the fall, less amount of students, fewer students, at proficiency level. And it should grow as the year goes. If it doesn't, well, okay, you know, that'll be something we'll have to take a look at. But you should see the end-of-the-year data to be better than the fall as students achieve mastery. One of the more interesting things, because it was our first year with iReady, is we did a correlation with the kindergarten and first grade DRA 2 assessments, which are individualized, one-on-one experiences with staff, and then compared it to the fall iReady data to see, okay, are we getting, getting the results we want to out of iReady? And it came in at a .82, which basically means it's highly correlated, meaning that we can have predictive results of students' literacy levels based on their iReady scores. So not only does teachers get some actionable data, but they get it in a time-sensitive way that they can use throughout the year to change student outcomes for the end of the year. We also did that same study for our ACCESS test. ACCESS is an assessment we use with English language learners, and we found that to be a .81. So the iReady data that we get is very valid and reliable for our students and teachers and families. So it's, it's been a good move to the iReady assessment. Looking at the data itself, you can see in, for kindergarten, it's a computer adaptive test, and this was our full first pilot year. So we did have our kindergarten students take it. We found that it just wasn't the right fit for our kindergarten students. So although that's, that is part of our AGR report that I'll submit to the state, I also included the DRA 2 data, because in the future, we're going to revert back to the DRA 2. And I wanted you to see as much of an apples-to-apples comparison as possible, so that you can see the DRA 2 and also the spring iReady data, side by side. Where I think it would get interesting is if you look at, let's say, the kindergarten AGR, a letter, sound, iReady assessment for kindergarten. The best way I would say is look at one season, either fall, winter, and spring, and compare that year to year. So you can see at the spring of last year, we had 58% of our students at proficiency. This year, we have 73%. So just hats off to our staff for their great work this year. And like I said, there's more than just the socio-emotional learning, but the academic, you know, we did see a bounce back for our data closer to back to 2019 levels than before. So we're on the right track there. Dr. Engel, before, mentioned that we did use the ESSR funds for early literacy data, or training, I should say, on the science of reading. So our K3 students are getting the science of reading training, the Orton-Gillingham training. We have a number of teachers that are getting their 316 reading specialist license, all of which contribute to what the data was we see here today. Another interesting point, I would say, with our literacy data is if you look at the three, or three grades in the fall, winter, and spring, you see that progression that I was saying. For example, our first grade, we only had 10% at end-of-grade level benchmarks. No surprise there, but you could see we're at 48% by the end of the year. 14%, and then 43% for second grade. In our third grade data, they came in strong at 39%, and ended up even stronger at 64%. So those grades that participated in the Orton-Gillingham training, we generally saw the greatest growth. Reference group data, you can see that we still have some gaps in literacy, and those are illustrated there. You, that sample size does matter, though, especially when we start to get down to individual grades. For example, third grade students who identify as black, there's a mistake there, and I wanted to point out. So it's 14 out of 16. That should be 2 out of 16. That generates the 13%. So that's an error on the board report I wanted to point out tonight. Native American or Native Alaskan, because we didn't have a qualifying number. That's why you don't even see the five, because there were less than five students there. For mathematics, we use a mixture of local assessments and iReady. Again, our kindergarten data is a bit of a drop. So we did not see as strong of data with our kindergarten as we did with, in math, as we did with literacy. If you look at that three-year trend, and you just track the spring of each year, we had 89, 88, 78, and 65. So my next board report that I'll have is the annual academic standards notice. And if you give me a little bit of liberty, I want to talk more about elementary mathematics at that time and plans to try to change that trajectory. What questions do you have about this year's AGR report? I will take this data, we then break it down by school and upload it to the state by the end of the month. In return, the state provides us funding that we use to lower class sizes at the K3 level.
Does changing that 14 to 2 change any other number that's on here, or was it just that?
That was the one. That was the one. So I caught that one this morning, after you had received it.
So Dr. Lahackey, just a point of clarification on here as well. One of the things you talk about is obviously want to see sort of growth over each of those, fall, winter, spring. Do you think that that is the most important aspect as opposed to that final percentage that we're seeing proficient at the end?
I think it's comparison year to year. Next year, when we have iReady for year two, I'll be able to provide cohort data as well, which will be interesting to track, you know, how our, this is how our first graders did. Now here is how they did as second graders, just to see their progression throughout the school district of La Crosse. But I can't do that with one year of data.
Thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none. Thank you very much, and we will move on to annual academic standards. Dr. Lahackey again?
Dr. Lahackey again. This is another action that is required by the school board annually, I think by July 1. And so we bring it to the board and just bring forward our academic standards. By and large, we adopt what the DPI has in place, but I'll let Dr. Lahackey get into the details.
That's correct. In 2015, Wisconsin Act 55 required the school board to approve the standards that are used in the school districts. As Dr. Engel said, we generally use the Wisconsin Model Academic Standards. The link is provided there, which will take you to each content area and their standards. Attached is a timeline, so DPI does provide, here's what the release of standards look like for the next five years at the state level, and then locally, we take that information and adapt it. If you do have that link open, you can see there are kind of four stages when it comes to curriculum adoption work. The first is exploration. Basically, hey, there's new standards. Let's take a look at them. Are they close to what we currently have? Are they radically changed? Let's do some investigation of them. On the second stage, and so, so sometimes you jump from that exploration, you go right to full implementation. For example, one of the standards that's coming out, it's called Essential Elements, ELA. Essentially, it's for students who are, have intellectual disabilities, what our academic outcomes are expected for them. So I don't, because they're new, I don't generally anticipate a lot of change or resources that may be required to meet that. But it does define outcomes that we can work with special education staff to help revise IEPs, right? Sometimes, though, there are more substantial changes. For example, elementary mathematics, in the AGR report, we kind of hit a pause on our trajectory of growth when it comes to mathematics. Essentially, in the school district of La Crosse, we have, we use math expressions, which is 2013. It has not stood the test of time well. Its alignment to standards has not held up its end of the bargain, and it's time for something to change. So what we did is we had a group of about 40 teachers. We came together and we researched all the curriculum in the world that could be available, right? Using a report called edreports.org, which is right? Using a report called edreports.org, which is a non-bias vetting source, we looked for the programs that had the most standards alignment and also that were highly usable, essentially plug-and-play options for our elementary teachers. Our elementary teachers teach multiple subject areas, so as much guidance and support we can give them in this content area would be preferred. So those are our two primary factors, and that brought us down to four choices. We brought each of them in for a vendor fair. They presented, gave us samples, and a committee of 40 took a look, and we narrowed that down to two. So the two choices at elementary right now are reveal mathematics and envision mathematics. Those are ones we'll pilot next year in the fall. Teachers raise their hand, basically, and say, I'm interested in doing that. We have a committee this summer that will look at the curriculum to make sure that even if a student is in one of the classes that's piloted, that they'll still hit a scope and sequence and hit all the standards they should in a particular grade level. We'll have a mixture of newer teachers, more veteran teachers, to give that full 360 experience of both the curriculum. And then I would assume, or in December or January, we'll be able to make a recommendation. We'll spend the rest of the next year piloting that one chosen curriculum, and then use the next summer to work on some more professional development and actually make the purchase so the implementation is 2023-24. So we do have some plans and works for mathematics, elementary mathematics. I wanted to share those. And it made more sense to do it, I thought, with the standards presentation than AGR. So other elements that I might want to mention, social studies has been a point of emphasis for the last few years. Our elementary is ready to go for this upcoming year, which will be pretty exciting. We've invested a lot of resources in trying to find diverse materials from multiple perspectives and engage the stakeholder groups to help make those choices. We're writing lesson plans. We've been writing lesson plans all year, and we'll continue to do so over the summer. Actually, what is it, tomorrow, there's a group going up to Minneapolis to also pick up some resources as well for some of the other grades for bookrooms. Middle school, that's on the docket. Middle school resources will be upcoming in the next year. So that will be a focus for us. Also, Spanish resources. We have a lot of teacher-created materials. We're just trying to bring them all together and make that Spanish experience more similar than different across the district. And those are the kind of the bigger ones coming up. I should mention, though, we do have the standards-based grading and learning at the secondary level. That's moving into what I mentioned before. This is the practice year coming. Let's try it out. What's worked, what doesn't work. Do our standards really tell us what we want the students to actually focus on? Do our assessments align? And that assessment piece is our focus of professional development for the upcoming year, to be able to look at the assessments and are we getting the information we want out of students that we want to? If not, how can we modify those assessments in some way? That will be the focus of professional development for next year. All right. Do you have any questions about the instructional program review cycle or the annual academic standards?
I do. You kind of touched on this a little bit, but can you expound upon how the teachers are involved in making those decisions around the curriculum piece?
Sure, sure. So for the math, well, let's see if I remember every step. So the math, for the math, elementary math, I had a student success coach, and I asked them to recruit staff in their building. That got us to about 40 people, right? We brought them together for, to look at the different vendor fairs, and we held them on Wednesdays after school for four Wednesdays. Actually, I lied. Three Wednesdays and one we had to double up. We gave out surveys to say, what did you like? What didn't you like? We let them keep the materials, experiment with them a little bit. And the four came down to, hey, we really liked this one. And then we had two that were awfully close to one another. So then a second survey went out and said, okay, because we had one clear favorite, would you prefer that we just pilot the one survey for the entire semester? And at that point, is that the one? Or do we still want to take some time to do the second one? That feedback came back, is that, no, we want to pilot two, but the data was really close between that second and third, even with that one as well. So the tiebreaker came with price. So the one that we didn't choose had a price tag of about $100,000 more than the other one. So that was a differentiator. So we got down to two. Now that we have the two, we have a committee meeting on June 13 of teachers. We'll have about five teachers to determine, what does a pilot look like this year? What instructionally will we need to provide for students so that they don't miss anything? Do we want to do it unit by unit? What about our year-round schools? How do we gather feedback from people that are doing the pilot? And those are decisions we'll make collaboratively on June 13. We're also going to hire someone, kind of an elementary math pilot coordinator, to be that boots-on-the-ground type of experience to say, hey, I'm doing this particular lesson, and I'm really struggling with it. Anybody else struggling with it? Let's figure it out. So when I say hire, I heard some murmuring, it's curriculum reports. So we'll give labor reports like we would for curriculum writing. So it's not a new position.
Okay. And then, just out of curiosity, good save. Out of curiosity, though, say that you run these pilots, and they're not successful. What do you, what's the standard practice after that?
Gosh, I hope one of them is. Because we did our homework on the front end. We worked with CISA to help develop these four. These are the four highest-rated curriculum that are out there, and they're current. So of these four, I think any of them would have been a good choice. But what we need, I'll give you an example. One was Into Math, and it is the newer version of math expressions. For a variety of reasons, a lot of staff said, been there, done that, not interested in round two of quasi-math expressions. So although that one was highly rated, it didn't make the cut with our staff. So that one was out. Another one was iReady. Some staff said, well, it's aligned to our universal screener. There's some, you know, connection there that can then lead to instruction. But some people didn't like the fact that a computer adaptive test was driving instruction as much as it would with iReady. More like reveal and envision in what they offered with their use of manipulatives and hands-on.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions?
May I just add a point here?
Sure, please.
I don't know if this will be helpful or not, but maybe for, more for the newer board members than anyone. But earlier in the meeting, we talked a little bit about the budget book and its formulation, and how that kind of happens over a series of reports. So what Dr. Lahaki has shared with us tonight with the instructional program review cycle, and ACP, and Achievement Gap Reduction, all of those eventually, similar to the development of the budget book, lead up to a report that we'll have in October called OE11, Operational Expectation 11, under instructional programs. So there will be all of these elements. You'll see one more time in the cycle. So I mentioned that only because of the example earlier. And, you know, when there's a lot kind of that, you know, to consume, just know that you'll see it all again.
Anything else? Hearing none. Thank you very much, Dr. Lahaki. And we will move on to our announcements then. And Ms. Bowman is not here. So I'll move on to my announcements. And just a reminder that we will not have a board meeting on the 4th of July, as that is a holiday. So just wanted to put that on your calendars now.
So there's only one board meeting for July?
Yes, there is only one board meeting for July. So there'll be a reminder at the next board meeting, but we wanted to notify you right now of that. And then I'll turn it over to Superintendent Engel.
No announcements this evening.
Wonderful. So then we will move on to agenda planning.
May I motion to approve the June 20, 2022 Board of Education Agenda with any additions or corrections?
Sir, a second. Okay. Moved by Mr. Corburg, seconded by Mr. Abraham to approve the June 20, 2022 Board of Education Agenda with any additions or corrections. All those of favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion has carried. And we'll move on to the board debriefing. And so I think I would just take a tour around the table tonight and just see if anybody would like to add any comments about how we did tonight, what worked well, what didn't work well, what should we improve. And so I think I'll start, start with Mr. Corburg, just because I'd hate to start with Dr. Garcia or Mr. Abraham as newer board members. So I'll start with Mr. Corburg.
I think the studies, now that they're coming through the second year, are much better at getting what we're trying to achieve. So I think that's working well.
Yes, I'll go. Yeah, I think that, you know, it's nice to be able to start seeing those reports for a second time, seeing what worked well, what didn't work well. I remember the long conversations we had when we first created these and wondering where we would need to make changes. And so being able to now see them working or not working, as it were, and then being able to have those conversations, because I know we've had those conversations at the board table. So I'm looking forward to the new voices on the board and being able to hear their perspectives, because that's how we progress. So I'm looking forward to your perspectives. Ms. Lainey?
Nothing to add, just continue to learn as a board member and thankful for everyone that came to speak tonight.
Mr. Spigot?
I guess the one thing I would say, because it always feels weird, so just in case you don't know, we're not allowed to comment on any of your speeches or things like that. What I will say is it's always good to see the improvements that the district is making around the academics. And then it's also always good to see, I guess not say good per se, but where we can make more improvements, particularly specifically when it comes to our youth and their education, and some of the gains that we're not seeing. And so I just look forward to seeing how the district addresses those.
Dr. Cooperstol?
Nothing to add.
Dr. Garcia?
I would say I enjoy hearing from the community, and I'm excited to see so many passionate teachers here sort of standing up and advocating for themselves. That makes me feel good as someone who mentors people into the profession. And I'm also interested in the iReady adoption and the new sort of testing thing. It's interesting, when you start to get cohort data, to see, when students get used to the test, they do better on it. And so I would expect to see, though the scores might not be what we want right now, I would expect to see a pretty big jump in improvement year over year as teachers and students know what to expect from the test, and they're not trying to both cognitively figure out what the test wants while they're also trying to do the content. So I look forward to that in the reports.
Thank you. Mr. Abraham?
Hi, Echo. I appreciate having the speakers here to learn all the information and hope we can figure out something there. And other than that, it was a lengthy and informative meeting.
Ms. Burkadell?
Nothing to add.
All right. Thank you very much, everybody, and we are adjourned.